... school committee meeting on March 1st in the Millis Middle School High School Library. I'm going to take attendance. Mr. Conroy.
Here.
Mr. Catalano.
Here.
Ms. Gibbons?
Here.
Ms. Roach?
Here.
Our teacher rep, Ms. Coppe?
She's here.
Okay. And our student reps, I think it's Jen. There you go. And Superintendent Malaney?
Here.
And I am here as well. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast, Channel 8, or Verizon, Channel 37. Oh, no. The internet's on me up. Sorry, one second.
Do you need paper?
It just like logged me out. One second, sorry. Sorry. Let me see this really quick and then we can get going. Okay. Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted on the Millis Public Schools website under School Committee. All videos are also available on YouTube. All school committee meeting minutes and agendas can be found on the school committee page of the Millis Public Schools website. Persons wishing to speak during open session must sign in before the meeting starts. Comments are not to exceed three minutes in time. Individuals may not name students, staff, or parents. All topics for discussion must be limited to those items listed on this evening's agenda and all comments must be directed to the chair. The committee may not respond to public comments. It shall be their decision to discuss issues at a later date, and all times are approximate. Jody, has anyone signed in for open session?
Yes, we have one person.
Okay.
You ready?
Yeah.
Now, if you see too much of the podium. Here?
Yes. Sit. Get comfortable.
No.
Nope.
Go sit. My name is Christine Conroy and live over on Walnut Street. I have a couple of kids that attend Clyde Brown. And I heard about the mask mandate for the middle school and high school being lifted, and I was thrilled. Great news. It's a move in the right direction. But then I heard that little kids at Clyde Brown, the poor little kids, the healthy little kids, have to remain masked. The ones that are relying on facial expressions to learn how to express themselves. Fear, anxiety, confusion. They need to use their faces for this. The kids who need to see other people speak because it's a building block to phonetic development, these kids must remain masked. The kids who just want to please the teachers, they will sit in that mask whether they sneezed or coughed, letting bacteria fester all day. These are the kids that have to be masked. I'm just tired of co-parenting. I feel like the teachers are supposed to teach. I'm supposed to make the decision whether to wear a mask or not. The teachers are put in a terrible position where they have to badger the kids, "Wear the mask, wear the mask, wear the mask." I feel like the masks are distracting. They're distracting from a good education that they haven't had, they need and they deserve, and the teachers can give it. And I have two kids. I asked my daughter, the mask mandate, what would, how would you feel if they lifted? What are you going to do? And my daughter says, she's seven, she says, "Mom, I just want to breathe. I just want to see my friends." And my heart broke a little. I asked my 10-year-old son, "What would you do, Anthony?" He said, "I don't think I, I think I would still wear my mask. I don't want people to see me. I don't want them to look at my face." And my heart broke even more. I just, I feel like psychological damage far outweighs COVID. And I, and I hope the decision is ultimately yours, but I hope you guys make the right one. So, that's my piece.
All right. We're going to move into our action items, and we are going to consideration to approve the school committee meeting minutes from our February 15th meeting.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from February 15th, 2022, as written.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right. Now, we're going to have our student reps.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
So, today we have Division 5 State Tournament for the Boys and Girls varsity basketball games. The girls will be at 6:30 PM on March 3rd at the Millis High School, and the boys will be at 6:30 PM March 4th at Westport High School. The sophomore class has ELM-CAS on March 23rd and March 24th. And as I said last meeting, that we're, everybody's getting help during our My Flex Learning Block. And midterms will end on Friday, and progress reports will come out next week.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thanks, Jen. All right. And then we have our teacher reps, Ms. Coppe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Hello.
So, coming from the Clyde Brown, Mrs. Beluzzi, the digital literacy teacher, has announced the Winter Fun Google Draw winners. They had three winners in each category, first place, second place, third place, and honorable mention. And you can visit their Google Draw works at the digital learning website. All of the drawings are beautifully designed, and congratulations to the winners. The physical education classes at Clyde Brown have been participating in a special event, Winter Olympics. These students have learned about the Winter Olympics with an emphasis placed on the importance of sportsmanship. They then completed in various events such as the torch relay, the bobsled, the ski jump, the biathlon, which is one of my favorites, curling, and ice hockey. Each student participated in, participated, sorry, for one of five countries, and a whole school gold medal tally will be announced next week. So, we'll know more about that on February 15th. Students in grades 3 through 5 will be participating in MCAS testing beginning at the end of March and going through the middle of May. Folks can access the testing calendar through the Clyde Brown website and the newsletter. At the middle school, six of the middle school students have had their artwork selected for the Massachusetts Art Education Association's Youth Art Exhibit, which will take place virtually next month. So, congratulations to Orea Cassandra. I don't have last names from them, sorry, they kept it a secret. Eliana, Jacob, Lexi, and Nicholas. Mrs. McGuire and the grade 6 Spanish immersion class would like to thank their guest speakers for taking time out of their day last week on Tuesday to be interviewed for the Meet Millis Project. The goal of the project is to make Millis a more hospitable place for Spanish-speaking newcomers. And so, they'll keep us posted on that as they work towards it. And the WIN students have been exploring the Wheel of Theodorus in grade 8 math. They are celebrating the intersection of art and mathematics. Students are using their knowledge of the Pythagorean theorem to create the Wheel of Theodorus, which is made of all right triangles and irrational roots as the hypotenuse. Maybe we can do that next. At the high school, as Jen mentioned, we are literally in the middle of Term 3, but the Term 2 honor roll went out last week. As a fun sort of spirit-raising activity, we have kicked off March Madness at the high school. And what is happening is different clubs are taking ownership of different days and planning different activities. So, this week today was We Are Millis Day, and if as you leave, you go by the bolt of water, you can see handprints, and we wore our school spirit today. Tomorrow is the Fox and Sox Challenge. Apparently, we're all supposed to wear our odd socks. And on Friday, the art club is hosting Art Shirt Friday. Wear your favorite art shirts. On the art vein, the fundamental art students have been creating batiks, which is a technique of using wax-resistant dyes applied to block them. It's an ancient technique, and their work has been stunning. In Chem II, we have been building both wet cell and dry cell batteries and juxtaposing the ease of current production versus the ease of use. So, that's been kind of fun. And let's see, Amnesty International is hosting a fundraiser on Friday to support Ukraine, and they are going to be submitting their donations through the Global Emergency Fund that Amnesty has set up in support of what's going on there. STEAM Scholar applications are opening this week on Thursday after informational session during My Flex Block. The program is open to sophomores, and we are actually graduating our second cohort this year, so that's exciting. In fact, I spent some time over break with one of our seniors working on their project, which is building phytochemical solar cells. So, that was kind of fun. Let's see what else. Oh, our sophomore students are immersed in their work for their sophomore research projects. They have just finished topic selection and had a lesson this week with Mr. Fallon on research question development. This is an interdisciplinary project that's administered through their science, English, and history classes, and will culminate in a long thesis room and paper and presentation in June. From the TIES program, the students are participating in job interviews with local employees starting this Thursday and with the transition program from Medfield, Holliston, and Hopkinton. The first one will be held at the Medfield Transition Program. Additionally, several of the students are preparing to take their learner's permit tests. So, that's really cool, in order to eventually obtain their driver's licenses and become more independent. On the district level, we have an early release day for professional development tomorrow, so thank you for that time. The CFP will continue their work on their core literacy review. They have been super focused on that. It's amazing. The middle school is working on growing and developing their WIN program, and the high school is starting our four-year dip into developing the portrait of the graduate, which will ultimately culminate with a team effort between all the stakeholders, community members, community employers, teachers, staff, parents, to kind of come up with what are the characteristics we want our graduates to have. The library has been awarded a grant to host a literary arts night, so that will be on April 27th. And that's all covered tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, no time on learning, so we're going to move into the chair report and COVID-19 updates. As many of us know, the CDC came out with new guidance on Friday of last week, and the Health and Safety Committee met today after school or through class, and so do you just want to share out which had involved?
Do you want to go first?
Madam Chair. So, we had a Health and Safety Committee meeting this afternoon, and just again, so everyone knows who's part of the Health and Safety Committee. It's myself and Mr. Catalano as representatives from the school committee, Superintendent Malaney and Terri Wiggins. We also have teacher representatives from each school, as well as the Board of Health Nurse, who is on the committee.
And the two nurses.
And the school nurses, sorry. Thank you. So, I took some high-level notes, so I think that will help in our discussion from, you know, what we talked about as a Health and Safety Committee. So, we first, we took some time to recap the activities of the Health and Safety Committee and the school committee over the past few weeks. So, we just kind of did a recap of last week and the week before, and how we came to the decision and the school committee meeting. We did discuss the new guidance that came out and what it could mean for Clyde Brown in unmasking. We then opened the floor for discussion. Again, this is, this is high level, so there's a lot of dialogue that was going on. It was actually really good dialogue. So, there was a lot of good dialogue about the right time to unmask the, at Clyde Brown. So, is it now? Is it, do we wait? Is it somewhere in between? I think we, we all agree that because of the new guidelines that came out and our continued low COVID cases, that waiting to March 15th isn't necessary. So, then it turned to, so what is the right date and how do we get there? So, you know, we did discuss, is it now? Tonight? Is it Monday? And we went back and forth on logistics and just, you know, discussion on COVID numbers and, again, I'm high leveling it just so we can have the discussion after. At the end, so it came out where, you know, a few members felt that waiting till Monday gave us a plan to, to plan and communicate to parents, and then a few members felt that we were good to go tonight. So, overall, the Health and Safety Committee is comfortable with unmasking ahead of the 4:15 date, but didn't overall agree on whether it's tonight or Monday. So, now, open it up, I guess.
3:15, you mean.
Sorry, 3:15. What did I say?
4:15.
Just wanted to clarify. Okay.
My bad.
So, thank you.
Yeah, was that, see, that was that?
Yes.
Did I capture the conversation?
Yes, exactly. You did a very good job. Here, the one piece was regardless of what happened on Friday, the discussion that occurred both at the Health and Safety on February 15th, and then the vote that we took on February 15th to unmask the middle school, high school, there was concern on February 15th at the Health and Safety about not unmasking the Clyde Brown right away, and there was a discussion about when to have, when to do it. And the feeling that day was wait until we get back from February vacation. And there was a conversation about waiting two weeks because the process for infections has been usually by day 10, you know what you have. So, we were, we're still stuck at the point of we have just now returned, and some of the conversation about, and it was fairly split, was waiting until Monday gives us the opportunity, one, to plan some of the logistics and communication, and, two, to see how things pan out with infections, and if there are an increase in infections in the school, at least everyone is masked, which could help contain the spread within the building through Friday, and then Monday would be the day to unmask. Is that accurate?
That was the discussion, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Conroy.
I know with, with it coming out, with the CDC guidelines coming out on Friday, and I don't believe the Board of Health had a scheduled meeting. I know, I think we reached out, but I don't think that they responded to us. Did the Board of Health Nurse have any feedback?
They, they had not had a conversation or were given guidance beyond what they gave on February 15th, or when, they gave us the guidance the day before, on February 14th. So, they, we, although we asked, we did not get guidance from the Board of Health.
And Mr. Malaney also reached out, and Mr. McVeigh said they were going to talk about it at their meeting on Monday, this coming Monday.
Okay.
Which doesn't help us right now.
Right.
So, Madam Chair. So, personally, and, and this was my stance, I'll speak for myself through the Health and Safety Committee meeting, you know, with, I think, the concern about a spike through vacation, I understand from prior vacations, we, COVID looked really different, right? So, through Christmas, we were kind of in that huge spike, and we were getting 10, you know, five, 10, you know, multiple cases per day. Our poor nurses were working 24/7 and couldn't keep up with everything. And we really did see that trend sort of two weeks after. I think that where we are now in our town and in our country with COVID, you know, we're out of that spike, so that the, the trend isn't to anticipate a huge increase in cases. So, you know, we, we talked about how many cases do we have now in the school, and I think that the answer was three. Is that?
I think that's right.
Yeah. Clyde Brown.
Yeah.
Can I just add one thing? Go ahead. Just on the, because in, in the memo Mr. Malaney sent out today, it looks like we've had 11 cases since break. Eight of them are back, three are still out. So, since vacation started, we've had 11 Clyde Brown cases.
So, three are?
Beginning.
Three are still out, right.
Three are still out.
So, we have none going into break.
And that includes, that includes staff.
Right. So, in the CFP community, we've had 11 cases since last.
Three who are in quarantine.
Three are still in isolation, eight are back.
But none would have been a, none would have been a result of being out on vacation. I mean, if you had, if you had COVID, you'd have no idea where they.
Well, they got it. They got, right, right. I was just, right.
So, again, so where I was going, we have, we have three cases now. We have one case in the middle school, high school. I think we're at the point where it's, it's time to take the masks off while we can, knowing that, you know, if things turn and there's another variant that we're going to have to ramp up. And I think the new CDC guidelines has set everyone up for that, where they have sort of a low-risk, medium-risk, high-risk, and, and guidance whether to put a mask on or take a mask off. And, and the guidance says, when you're in that low, get the masks off while you can, because we don't know what's coming in the future, and if we have to ramp back up, we got to put the masks back on, give, you know, give everybody a break now. I mean, Boston just announced today that they're taking, you know, that the mask mandates are expiring on Saturday. I understand it's scary for some people. I understand it's not fast enough for other people. It's, it's, you know, we're not going to, we're not here to make everyone happy. We're here to look at, you know, what the data we have and make the decision based off of that. And I, and I personally think that we're there with Clyde Brown.
Madam Chair. So, I, I agree. I think that, I think that we're there. I, speaking for myself, I'm just not comfortable without us doing it tomorrow. So, my understanding is that there's a little bit of additional work for the younger children as they pass from teacher to teacher and classroom to classroom and some logistics with lunch. So, when we moved to unmasking for the middle high school, we didn't have some of those complexities. So, I'm certainly not in favor of any sort of long duration of delay, but I do think that there might be benefit to having it mask optional as of Monday, to give nurses some time to work through logistics in the Clyde Brown, to communicate out fully to families that Monday Clyde Brown is unmasking, and also to communicate the importance of those families that opted in to the at-home testing, the importance of doing that at-home testing on Sunday night, which is part of the program if you've opted in, and reporting those back because Monday starts no masks for the Clyde Brown. So, I, I am pleased that we're able to have this discussion tonight, which wasn't even supposed to be planned until the 15th, so I'm glad that we're accelerating it. I'm grateful that the CDC came out with their guidance. We want nothing more than to get as much normalcy back for these kids than we can. We're here. We've done everything to date in a seemingly the most organized fashion that we possibly could have, given all of the experiences and the situations that we've sort of been thrust into. I, I think just taking it on this final step and doing a bit of outlining and organization of how they're going to work through managing kids without the masks at Clyde Brown, because it's a little different than middle high school. They're a little less independent than they are up here, and unmasking on Monday would be a prudent approach. I also think that we have the transportation to address as well. So, I don't know if we want to take those all together, if we want to take them separately, but I'd be in line with mirroring the transportation policy on masking with what we already decided for middle high school and whatever we decide tonight for Clyde Brown.
Madam Chair, I, I too support unmasking, but waiting until Monday. Based on some of the conversation within the Health and Safety, there was some concern from one of the nurses on the call that she would have appreciated, she would, she would like to see the extra three days, which I, to mirror and to echo what Ms. Gibbons says, we are having a conversation about, we weren't going to even, we were going to have the conversation on 3:15. The earliest we could have done was the 16th, so we're talking a full eight days earlier. I, we, we unmask three days early going into vacation. This is different coming out of vacation. I think three more days, and we get to Monday, and then we're unmasked.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Roach.
I apologize. I forgot to talk about transportation. That was also spoken about at Health and Safety. And it was that, like, sort of what, in line with what Ms. Gibbons said, that, you know, if we're mask optional in the high school, middle school, that it's, you know, mask, it would be okay, or everyone felt it was fine to take masks off on the bus for high school, middle school, and then to mirror that for whatever day we choose to unmask for Clyde Brown.
That's correct.
One other thing that, you know, I'd like to say about Clyde Brown, Mr. Catalano just talked about logistics and bringing kids back. We have, we have three kids coming back that will have to, on Friday, that we'd have to, and this is spoken about at Health and Safety, that will be coming back from COVID and having to mask for those extra days. And the nurse, the nurse at Clyde Brown did say that she felt like if she had to, that, you know, she could work it out, that, you know, they would come up with whatever procedure that they needed to, to track those kids from, from, from class to class. It's three kids. They're, they're the, the small kids. It's not like high school where they're having to independently change classes. We know where these kids are going. So, to hand them off and just to say, this kid needs a mask on, I don't think is a big logistical lift.
Mr. Conroy, you have any other thoughts?
No. I mean, I think, again, we're, we're sitting in, as Ms. Roach said, that we're in this situation where people want, every, there are a group who would like things done, would have appreciated things done sooner, and there are a group who probably want to wait, you know, would hope that we wait another, the full two weeks after break. And personally, I don't think, oh, we can't go back in time, and waiting two weeks more, I don't, I don't think makes sense, given the CDC guidelines. And also, even if you count, I think, if you go with, you know, counting transmission at seven to 10 actual calendar days, we just had it at two weeks after break, you know, was the going theory. But seven to 10 days puts us, Mondays in that range. I do think, obviously, you know, where the cases came, but the vaccination rate at Clyde Brown is significantly lower than the high school and middle school. And I know it's the community, the Clyde Brown community includes staffs, but I do think that the fact that there were 11 cases in the last seven days in the Clyde Brown community, and there's one clay, one case at the middle school and one case at the high school, gives a little bit of reason to say there's still, it's still moving around Clyde Brown, and kids are not going to get, staff members are not going to get seriously ill, thankfully, most, on rare instances, some might. But transmitting, it's still going to put people out for five days or more. And so, I would agree with Denise and Steve's, I guess, compromised solution of waiting until Monday and doing it effective Monday. Something drastically changes and gets worse, then I don't think that's going to happen, but we'd have to adjust after that. Hopefully, you know, I don't ever want to put masks on anybody going forward, even getting into fall and winter. I just, I don't want to go back to this place. So, that's my, my thought.
Okay. I, I think that we've been diligent about following the CDC and the Board of Health recommendations, and now they're sort of juxtaposed a little bit. And so, not being able to hear what the full Board of Health wants, I think that the, the Monday, the 7th, is a compromise in that we are doing what they have requested at the Health and Safety meeting, and also meeting the COVID guidelines that the CDC has put out as well, so.
Madam Chair. I just want to clarify that the Health and Safety Committee did not request as a whole to wait till Monday.
Right. But the Board of Health member did. Is that not true?
The, the nurse asked to wait, but she's one member of the, of the committee.
The member that represents the Board of Health?
She's a non-voting member, but yes, she's on the Board of Health.
Okay.
But the voting members of the Board of Health said wait till April.
Right.
So, I do want to just say one more thing, and then I won't say anything else.
You can say many things.
No, it's fine. So, that the kids with Clyde Brown, and I understand the hesitancy, I get it, and I, I understand. It's not, it's, change isn't easy, and, and things have changed with COVID so rapidly, and we've been told one thing, and then the next day or two days later, we're told something completely different, and we're all expected just to pivot, you know, on a drop of a dime, and I get it. But when we're faced with the fact of that these kids are going to be masked at school and nowhere else, so, you know, you know, Millis youth basketball is going into playoffs right now, and we're all at mass premiere, and there's, you know, masks aren't mandatory, and the kids don't wear them, and, you know, they're at, you know, Cub Scouts and Girl Scouts, and we're at, you know, party, you got, you know, Friends House and parties, and we're not, they're not wearing masks. And that's not a bad thing, you don't have to wear masks. It's a choice, right? But then we're saying that we need to wear them in, in school. I think it's just, I think we're just, we're at the point, I, I think we're at the point with COVID that we really just need to, you know, make it, just extend that choice to school. So, it's not, not to say that you can't wear a mask, and if you're, if you're comfortable. I know my son still, he'll start off wearing his mask wherever he goes, and then, you know, he gradually gets comfortable and he'll, and he'll take it off, and that's, you know, whatever parents and kids are comfortable with, because that's what we're doing outside of school. So, I just feel, you know, whether it's Monday or tonight, and it looks like it's going to be Monday, I just think that, I know, we're, we're ready to do that.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Roach.
I make a motion to rescind the mask policy as of Monday. What's the date?
7th.
7th.
The 7th. Monday, the 7th.
I'll second it so we can have further discussion. Second.
So, the motion's seconded?
7th.
The 7th, Monday, the 7th.
I'll second it so we can have further discussion. Second.
So moved and seconded further discussion?
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything in the policy, so?
The Health Offices, but I don't think that has to be a policy. I think that would be a policy of the Health Office, just like there's other policies for different parts of the building. I don't think we need a school, community policy for that.
Yeah, do we need to, do we want to do anything with transportation at middle, high school prior to Monday?
I, I think we do it separately.
Well, it's part, it's.
Separately.
Even though it's part of the, even though it's part of the policy?
This motion rescinds the whole thing as of.
Monday.
As of Monday, which is fine.
Okay.
We can then make a motion to rescind the transportation portions for the high, middle school, high school, effective Monday.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
Moved and seconded.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
All opposed? Uh, me. Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to. Is it eliminate? No, eliminate.
Rescind?
Rescind the mask policy for middle school, high school students on Millis transportation effective immediately.
Second.
This is literally nonsense. Guys, this is, this is.
Robyn, there's been a motion and second.
Second? Was there a second?
Second, I seconded.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
It was.
To rescind the mask for middle school, high school.
For transportation, effective immediately.
Transportation, effective immediately.
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 Immediately. Okay, um, we are moving on to the superintendent report right now.
Ma'am, you're out of order, I appreciate it. No, you're out of order. I, I, whether you agree or disagree of what happened, you're out of order.
I seconded, Steve made a motion, I think I seconded.
Jody?
No, she seconded the transportation.
Oh, sorry, Carrie seconded.
That was for the transportation.
Okay.
For transportation, for the middle school.
Yep.
Yes.
Moving on to the superintendent report.
Okay, just some, some good news. I'm pleased to announce that our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Mari Nolden, applied for and received a state grant to help fund our literacy initiative at Clyde F. Brown.
That's great.
The Accelerating Literacy Learning with High Quality Instructional Materials Grant for nearly $120,000 will allow us to equip classrooms with high-quality instructional materials and provide professional development needed to support the successful implementation of these materials and curriculum. As you know, we're currently in the process of vetting the literacy programs to use at Clyde Brown. Teachers are currently reviewing the three kind of finalists in that area, and so this grant is, is huge for us, and, you know, it was one of the things that, when we talk about budget later, it's one of the things that wouldn't be included in the 4% budget that we're looking at, but we would certainly be one of those additions beyond 4% that we would propose. So this $120,000 is going to help us to implement that very important curriculum, so I'd like to publicly thank Mari Nolden.
Good job.
That's great, excellent work.
All right, let's back to the, it's a short sweep. It looks like we are, yeah, it looks like we have a working session for our budget, and then executive session for our contract negotiations for union and non-union personnel. I forgot, is this a roll call vote?
So we do, we have to do a roll call vote to go off camera, to go into working session, and then we take, and then to go into executive session, from the non-camera working session.
Okay. So let me, who's names here? Mr. Conroy.
Yes.
Mr. Catalano.
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons.
Yes.
Ms. Roach?
Yes.
And I am also a yes.
Wait, wait, hold on a second. Don't we have to make a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano.
I make a motion to go off camera, to go into budget working session, to be followed up by executive session.
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded, further discussion? All right, Mr. Conroy.
Yes.
Mr. Catalano.
Yes.
Ms. Gibbons.
Yes.
Ms. Roach.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. We will reconvene on March 15th, and we'll see you then.